Oh, I can sit here, I can sit below.
Can we go like into the.
That's what I.
Into the van.
You're right here.
I like his response to this.
Hear that?
I'll second that.
Anytime I come in here, any other time I'd like to. Like to test with the handles and everything else, especially if I know the admin are gonna be in here, because I'll drop that for a nice day.
Sometimes I follow a really short person. But I don't know whether it can.
Okay, it's six o'clock, let me give everybody just a second.
Or five o'clock. Yep, whatever time it's supposed to be.
Stand up before the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, welcome to our work session. And. We will just let Mrs. Wilson talk to us about the budget.
Okay, um, so looking at the budget, we're gonna go over the actual budget hearing later on in the board meeting, so just to give a kind of general overview of where we're at and what it's looking like for Plat one. Um, at the end of the year, we were able to transfer five hundred thousand dollars into our depreciation reserve, um, which is being held instead of in the general fund in our capital construction fund. It does not count towards the cash carryover that the school districts can hold in our depreciation reserve fund. Um, the total amount that um, we're anticipating for the, for Plat one to be able to carry over is five million four hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred twelve dollars and seven cents, if you want the exact number. Um, currently, we're looking at having close to four point six million dollars in our cash carryover in our general fund. So um, we wanna try and begin to kind of move that down a little bit just in case legislation were to change and that they were to decrease us back to the twenty percent. Um, so we know we are right nearing the absolute max, um, but I feel like we're in a good spot as far as we have enough in cash to make payroll and things over the summertime for cash flow, but um, just trying to be proactive a little bit of what legislation is gonna do with that cash carryover, um.
Jimmy, I had a question, so did you, can you talk about how the actual carryover amount changed from including the charter school compared to like our true ADM?
Uh huh. Yeah. Right, and so um, looking at it, I, in the, in years past, they were including our charter school in our entitlement and in our cash carryover, and they are no longer doing that. It is strictly off of plat one's entitlement amount. So you're gonna see that that with our ADM going down, that's also gonna be less cash that the school district can carry over as well. Because when our entitlement goes down, the cash carryover also has to decrease. Because they're not paying us as much money, so your thirty percent is going down as well. So um, prayer review is no longer included in that amount, um, so it's.
So that was kind of the change, if you guys remember, we were kind of talked about that earlier, like proactively, we thought we shouldn't have the carryover based with, with the students from prayer review, we kind of felt like we should just do it over our actual ADM. And so that's exactly where at, at about thirty percent of our true ADM. And that's as kind of the highest we could be in terms of our carryover, so. But that was a change that we kind of predicted a little bit, so.
Yeah. Um, so then moving forward, as far as appropriations go, like I said, we'll go into it a little bit more when we get to do the full budget of how everything is made up and the changes and everything, but general fund, we're looking at twenty-two million two seventy-six. Uh, special revenue fund of four million one forty-one, capital construction fund, one million four ninety-three, food service fund of six hundred twenty thousand, custodial fund of two million eight eighty-one, and the recreation district at one seventy-one three ninety, um, for a total appropriation of thirty-one million five eighty-four one ninety-five. Uh, the twenty-four approb- excuse me, the twenty-five appropriation was twenty-eight million seven oh four three forty-nine. Um, the amounts to be raised through taxation for Pike County School District is four million six twenty-seven five forty-one as compared to last year at five million two eleven two eighty-nine. Um, so a little bit of a difference in the amounts, um, with taxes which we anticipated, the um, county valuation has decreased also with the decrease in property taxes. We anticipated that the state would be making up more of our revenue for the school district. Um. If you guys have any questions in regards to the budget, um, that you've all had a chance to look at it, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions from you guys. Um, we can go over the budget amendment part for later on, or whatever pleases the board.
So as I'm, I'll just go ahead and start, as I'm looking at the major maintenance stuff, correct me here Jimmy, where does the, the boiler and glindo, the AC units that need to be repaired, where do those fall in? Are they under one of these big, like, are they less than one of these big ticket items that's in here? Cause as I'm looking at this, and go ahead Jimmy, cause there's, there's five items in here that are listed out.
Correct.
And there is zero AC listed in those items.
Um, let me.
Or climate control is what I should, how I should put it.
Let me look and see like kind of what my cutoff was for the major projects, um. Here. So. The Libby split units.
Actually, yeah, Libby splits are on there, but that's.
It's there.
Okay, it's the hundred eighty thousand, okay?
Okay.
And then um, as far as the glindo, I don't know, um, maybe Mr. Tole can help me out here. That was a project that was gonna maybe be in twenty-seven?
No.
Or it's not one of my projects I have listed as far as for twenty-six.
We talked about it, we're still in that planning stage, trying to get everything moving forward on that. So when we listed everything, how much should have made that? I would assume, but I don't have that in front of me, so sorry, I wasn't prepared to look at budgets, um.
I thought that was to be a two-year. I thought you were hoping that it would hang on for two years.
I'm hoping it, you know.
That would be twenty-seven.
Hang on for that long, but I would like to see it happen next summer, but we're still. The trouble is, is with the state, we're kind of in a little bit of a. They won't just step in and let us put rooftop units or anything else, so we have to change apples to apples. So we're trying to get approval from them to let us, cause yes, we're changing our heating and cooling system, but it's not the same exact system, so they're trying to work on their end to figure out how we can use major maintenance to cover all of that. So it's still kind of up in the air on how, because to actually step in and change the whole system right back to what it is, um, it doesn't give us air heat, the, the cooling and everything else, so we're kind of waiting on the state like always to figure out what they can do to help us.
So you're not far enough in the process to have numbers?
No, I'm not far enough, we're waiting on the engineers and jumping through all the hoops and.
And it sounds to me like there's a possibility that we're going to have to pay a portion of that. Will they pay for the heating portion if we would choose to pay above that for the cooling? Or is it, like you said, apples to apples and they won't even pay yet?
Well, it's, and that's where we kind of run into that issue of apples to apples is no problem, we can jump on and do that, but to change and add the air conditioning and that stuff, that's where we're running into the issues. And so it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense just to change out the boilers without trying to add the cooling. And so it's just, just kind of walking through all that stuff.
What happens if the boilers go down? Do we have a contingency plan if they go bad to get them done right away?
Um. Luckily, it's not, I don't see any way that it's going to fully go bad. Like, if it got, was to that point where I was that worried, we'd be trying to figure out something a little quicker. It's on its last legs, but I think we have a little bit of time before anything. I mean, at this point, it's more pumps and some of those things that we can change.
So you feel like you could limp it along if it came down, maybe change a pump and it would keep going type?
Yeah, I, it's a pretty simple system, I, unless something really catastrophic happened, and then, yeah, but.
So Jim, is there heating units on the new part? Is there a different split?
Yeah, the other part has the boilers, the new conditions.
So did you move them to another location if they didn't?
Yeah, and we could figure out some solutions to keep major plumbing freezing and stuff, but.
Even in that new, that new area though gets pretty hot.
Well, and that's our biggest complaint up there, is it's always trying not to keep it cool enough, like.
Yeah, it's a sauna sometimes.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I was thinking more on the heat.
Even if, even on the new end.
Yeah, I was just thinking more heat wise.
Well, the hard part is, is when we start looking at controls and everything else that goes into the system, you kind of shoot yourself in the foot if you jump in and just put the boiler in, cause then you put in all the controllers and then everything just doesn't. So you're just kind of, you know, bit of a.
But the heat went out in the middle of winter, would those split units on the new side be available for heat? So they could have classes in the new area?
Um, well, that, that other end has two new boilers down in there.
Mm-hmm.
So that provides that.
I was just trying to answer Doug's question, if the main boilers go out.
We, we'd still have heat in the other part of the building.
Yeah, you could move the students. Yeah.
And so.
My next, where are we at on some engineer looking at it and at least designing it, so we're halfway ahead of this scheme?
There again, that's, this fun of waiting on the state, like we can use major maintenance to design it. Um, we're allowed to do that, but in, I've reached out to our engineer and we're on the list with him to come up and start the process, he's been up there a couple times. And luckily, when we did the last, last summer's air handlers, he already done a lot of the pre-work on figuring it out, cause it was kind of an option at that point, so we're just kind of waiting on them to give us all the answers we need.
I guess from my perspective, I'd sure like it to be on the table and worked on and completed next summer, and that's where we're at. I mean, I don't want to keep pushing it down, and I don't think you do either, but maybe we need to push harder work. It gets resolved, so we're not dealing with it this time next summer.
Can we tell the state we want it by next summer? I mean, isn't that kind of the impasse?
I, that, that's more, honestly, that's always the hangups, the state, like we get to this point and Mercer studies or anything else, like, I can push and I can push and I push, but I can't make some things happen any faster than they're willing to jump, so. So I would love to see it happen by next summer, I would love to see it happen this summer, but it just.
We will leave it in your capable hands and look for an update soon.
Oh, well, I, that's all I have.
Okay, any other?
For as far as like a generalized uh, review of it, like I said, we'll go over it in detail here in the next forty-five minutes.
Is there any indication the federal funds are gonna get cut at all at this point in time? I keep reading about all this stuff and I, I get nervous.
Mm-hmm, so right now, those, those are like Title II and Title IV, so those are put on hold currently. But we, those are two-year grants, so we have a whole year remaining, so we do have class, we do have class introduction, which gives you kind of an opportunity to hire another teacher, which evens out, kind of like lowers your classes. So we do have that position for next year, but we have the budget to cover it. So we feel like we're, we have a year kind of buffer before that really impacts us with those two areas. Title II is the one that has to do with more PD for our staff to learn, to, to better equip them with learning standards. Um, and the Title IV doesn't have as much funding in it, it's like well-rounded, safety, those are smaller amounts. But again, we have funding available for this next year. If it comes to a complete halt, then next year, we're probably gonna have to absorb at least one classroom teacher into our general fund. Today, we got a needle from Mark Bauer, he's kind of the, one of the heads at the plumbing department of that, and he said federally, they feel like there's been some mismanagement of money and that's the holdup. They're not making a decision now, they have representatives, I think, Megan might have went with Mary Bravo, who's kind of like oversees those at the state department, and they were just saying it's on hold. So it's not saying it's not gonna be available, but um, those funds, I mean, people use them just like we do for what they're intended, so it could impact staff. But we do have a year.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, then with that, we will, thank you for your work, Mrs. Wilson. Alright, we will move on to the draft components for the House Bill one seventy-two rule. Um, as we know, the House Bill one seventy-two um, allowed, if you have a concealed carry permit, you can carry in schools, government buildings, different places that repealed the gun-free zones. And at our last meeting, the board decided, uh, voted to propose a rule for anyone in our district that would like to carry, meaning a, a teacher, um, employee of any kind or volunteer. If they chose to carry um, on the school premises at any time, they would be subject to this rule. Uh, Mr. Rigel has given us the steps for rulemaking. Um, any, you guys have any questions on that or on the steps? So basically tonight, we're just looking at the um, proposed rule.
Do you have a printed copy of that?
Um.
I wish I was one.
Yes, that would be great.
I did connect it to the work session.
It is.
Yeah, it's P D O, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did connect it.
It's a link on there.
Okay, I think it's here, I had seen it earlier, but see what happens when we do this.
We happen to know somebody. I'm just teasing Ryan.
Did you get it?
Yep, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I've looked at this a little bit.
So looking over Scott's, it sounds like, you know, your draft doesn't have to be complete, but it has to be pretty close to whatever, and then you get feedback and you can always adjust it, you know, after the public hearing. So this document doesn't have to be voted on by the board, but it has to be pretty close moving forward to get feedback, so.
And then it would be published, um, we'd send it to the paper tomorrow, it'd be published next week. And then with the government rules needing forty-five days, we would look at it again to vote on it um, in September at our meeting.
And I looked at the date, so you can have the public hearing the same date as the board meeting to approve it. You can also extend it if you wanted to longer. When I looked at the information I sent, or in the notice part of it, that's kind of what I, I don't know if you guys want to do that or not? That was just something that I looked at, like, you can, you're gonna hear some things between now and then, right? They can contact, we, I think we put Lou as an email, you can send information, you can have a copy of this located here if someone's gonna come in. They can give you guys verbal feedback, written feedback, electronic feedback, and you're in a public hearing, and then you can make that decision moving forward. But I don't know if you want to put more time into after the hearing or not, you're probably gonna hear it no matter what, how we do it, so.
Totally agree.
You guys, so.
I think that now the time is for it, we should get feedback.
Okay.
I think we had very little feedback so far, but I think putting it in the paper and letting people can see it and uh, leaving it that way, I'm, I'm okay with the rule and the process John, where, where the length of time sets.
So the other thing I thought about, we, we had, there was some discussion about upping those numbers in terms of training, so I don't know if you want to just keep it as is and then get feedback and then make a decision, or as an entire group, you like to up more requirements? I don't know, that's one of the questions, I think.
And that's something that, you know, our law enforcement had kind of implied that there's not an amount of time to prepare somebody for such a thing when we discussed that the last time. I just don't, in my mind, know what, what is that amount of time, like what, what are those hours, what, what is acceptable? In my mind, some training needs to happen no matter what. Like, and that's where I sit with this, with the sixteen and the eight, I'm okay with that. Because you're putting on the responsibility to carry that firearm, at least understand what that responsibility means. You know, and is there a waiting separately to bring the sheriff's department in or the police department in? When we do our live fire drill, or not live fire, when we do our active shooter drills, to take it a little bit further? Now that we have this in place and people can carry in, what do our, what does our staff need to know more than what we've already been all educated upon with this? Cause I think anybody in a business setting pretty well has been through an active shooter training of some sort. And there's not much to them, like they, they go through your building and say, hey, these are weak points, whatever it is. But maybe, maybe our local law enforcement can say, hey, look, here's what we see when we look at Libby. Here's the issues we see, here's what you need to be prepared for. You know, make that more of a thing now with our staff. And leave this in the, can you handle your firearm? Have you learned what your rules are for having that as far as your concealing carry goes in general? And you know, the eight hours of class training, maybe they'll do a little bit more with it. You know, because they know that that individual is an educator, maybe they'll have something more for them, you know, at some place, but that's not, I haven't reached out to anybody and asked them questions about that. I've just looked at the amount of time of the trainings, and I don't think sixteen and eight is unreasonable, unreasonable. I think that's doable.
So would you flip the sixteen and the eight?
No, I would not.
I actually, I'm okay with the sixteen and eight, I, I would prefer twenty and, and ten, I think, was my thoughts at the last meeting when we had that discussion, but two things, this is new to all of us, and so we'll see uh, how it goes and maybe instructors can tell us as they go through this. Listen, maybe they, you need a little bit more of this and, and stuff like that, but um, and then I think I said sixteen hours of continuing, uh, recurrent training. Twelve is probably too little, but I'm willing to do that, we're gonna learn as we go with this, as far as I'm concerned, but um, it's a starting point, and maybe we'll get, I, I, I can tell you that it, it won't matter on public comment, I won't go down from the minimum of sixteen and eight and twelve. You guys all might, but I can stay pretty strong in my positions.
I think the sixteen hour of live fire, that's more making you responsive with that thing. Because that's, and I'll go back, this is no different than CPR first aid. The more you train with the AED, the more you understand how it works, the more you do compressions, the more you understand that, the more, and I feel like the biggest thing here is we're adding a firearm to our classrooms. So that is, that is the focus of this, is the firearm to a classroom if someone wants to do that. And that's where I see the sixteen hours is pretty critical. Because can you conceal it and carry it correctly? Great. Can you pull it and use it correctly? Great. But in order to do that, you've got to get some repetitive training, training and to do it as far as I'm concerned, and maybe I'm wrong.
Well, that's why I asked if you would switch the sixteen and the eight, because the eight is of scenario-based training using non-lethal training firearms and ammunition, so that, that's why I asked. Just to clarify what my question was, if you would switch the sixteen and the eight, because that would be your scenario-based training, should that be more than the live fire?
See, this is where I think we bring, kind of bring, you know, and I, I see what you're saying, but this is where I look at our local sheriff's department and the police department and say, hey, help us out with our general training and make it more of a scenario of, here's what we're gonna see. Would this change, here's what, what we could see right here.
Well, that's why I'm asking, if you did the, and again, I, I'm not really fighting for this, it's a total open question of if you did the scenario-based training on non-lethal training and de-escalation of that, then they can come in, you could delay it enough that hopefully they can come in with their guns ablaze in. And then we don't.
Yeah.
That's why I asked, it's just a thought.
I don't know. I guess my focus has been so much on the concealed portion of this, with the gun, that I look more at, can you handle that?
Cause I know a lot of people that know CPR, but yeah, I don't know that they've ever seen somebody not breathing.
Mm-hmm.
And it's totally different than.
Yeah.
So I'm not, again, I'm not disagreeing with you or disagreeing with what I just proposed, I'm just a different view.
No, I, yeah.
I think it's really hard to come up with hours whenever we don't know what the training involves.
And it does say that it has to be no less than sixteen and at least eight scenario-based, so they could take more scenario-based training, they could do something as long as it, it adds up to sixteen hours total. And a, a minimum of eight would be scenario training, so. Um, I think we need, and I agree, I'm not disagreeing with anybody either, but we have to be careful that, that training, you know, it will not be sponsored by the school, the district, we're not gonna get into providing the actual training for the teachers, this would be for professionals to do, whoever wanted to, um, and that's item number two. Uh, the employee shall at their expl- expense complete recurrent training. This is gonna be on the, on the teacher's expense or the employees, the district employees' expense to do whatever training we, we tell them, so I'm gonna use that to make sure that that's clear.
And that's, that's sad in some ways, though, because the whole state, everyone who has a concealed carry doesn't have these qualms that they have to meet. Meaning there's more freedom for everyone else but our employees. And, and that doesn't seem good to me.
Well, not everybody that has a concealed carry is in a classroom, and so it's a big difference in my view that um, if the legislature hadn't done this to, as it kept a gun-free zone, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And I, and I still say, that's what they, everybody says we want to have all this freedom until it's not what we want, then we want to impose rules like no gun-free zones, you can carry everywhere you want to carry, and that's their freedom and, and it imposes it on everybody else. We're as, uh, Clay has said, we were dealt this hand, we have to do the best we can, and.
Yeah.
And so.
And there's people that will have freedom to bring guns into our, our facility. That's why we don't want to be prohibitive to the ones that want to be um, us carrying inside.
Well, we've already voted that we're moving ahead on this, so that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, yeah, we voted to have the role, the, the.
Rulemaking process.
Yeah, right now, we're just finalizing basically this, cause this was basically the state model policy, the model rule. And so now is the time to make any changes to it that we want to talk about, and then when we meet again with the public comment meeting, we can still make changes to it up until that time. But it just needs to be as close as what we want, um, so we can publish it. And then again, we vote on it after the public comment, and you can vote yea, nay, modify it, whatever, but we just need to keep the wording how we want it, so any any other changes or thoughts or? Any other changes or thoughts or? Okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
Um, so I did, after reading this and kind of comparing it to the state statute. I did have, I have a couple concerns come up, so this policy, while it does address volunteers, how it's worded. You're basically a volunteer once you start working with any of our kids, whether it's a chaperone or in the class, even for a single day. Yet it doesn't address when you stop being a volunteer. And so my concern there is that there's no sunsetting, no clarification on. If I'm no longer an employee and I want to go, I don't have any more kids, but I'm gonna go to my kid's class. When does that stop and when can I exec- execute my right to carry concealed within the school property? Yet this doesn't say anything about that, so there's one concern. Again, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I'll leave this to Mr. Weaver, but. Kind of when Amanda was talking about flip-flopping after reading the state statute, I don't think you can flip-flop those hours, I think you can increase them. But it sets the minimum sixteen hours, eight hours, and then, so.
Right, and I, I was basically just. Going for the scenario part over the.
Mm-hmm.
So you could increase the scenario-based training side of it, if that's.
Mm-hmm, and it was just a thought on the, I would hope that if there is an issue. And somebody picks up a desk and throws it, that the teacher's not gonna be like, you can't do that. You know, like, that was my thought process, like, let's maybe tame it down and let the cops come in and.
And then my, my last, not con- maybe concern or question, kind of going to the instructor trainer qualifications, so. It says, um, that they have to be on an approved list, so who's gonna maintain that list? Is it the local law enforcement, and if so, are they on board? Do we already have that list compiled for when this goes into, into, um, policy that people can start? I don't see how that can't, you know, already be in place and then we apply this policy. And then down the road, who maintains that list? So, you know, the, the instructor retires, you know, how do we get more instructors, how do we? And whose responsibility is it?
Okay, I, I can go with that part, excuse me, because back when we, um, there was a discussion. I think was you were asking, how, how can somebody be identified as somebody who has a concealed carry when they come into a building?
Right, cause we can't, cause we can't ask that, because that's your personal right to.
Like, how would you know, and then? Right, so, but with, like what he's saying, if we're gonna. Say that the employees have to have all of this stuff, you were asking, you want to know. When somebody's coming in to visit, you want to know whether they're a concealed carry person or not, however, it's supposed to be their. Personal information, however, employees, there, somebody has to have a list of who all it is. And they have to maintain that, that this is being done, but it's supposed to be their right, so how do you?
Well, and see, the public company, we can't control that, that's out of our hands, we can't.
But do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but.
So, so that person has that right, but now the employee does not, because they have to declare that they have done this, so you would have a list.
Well, that's, that's more for. That would be more for law enforcement to have, so that should something horrible happen. There is a step in place to be able to make sure that that individual is protected in a sense. And maybe not protected is the right word, but at least they know that you as that teacher. Might be carrying the day.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, yeah. But this is also back to assuming the responsibility, I think this is what Doug's getting at too, correct, I'm wrong there. But if you're assuming the responsibility, you want to do that as one of our employees. And Brian, I see your point as the volunteer, that's, that's tricky. Um, but if you're assuming that responsibility, there's more to it than just packing your gun.
Mm-hmm, I'm not disagreeing.
You know, and that's, that's where I see this at, is assuming that responsibility, you're taking on more than just your normal duties as a teacher. Because now you are taking on that protector stance, and. Maybe in the state of Wyoming, correctly, I, I have no idea, but I'm just gonna throw it out there. We don't declare someone a peace officer anymore unless you have gone to some sort of training, you have had training of some sort. So as far as I'm concerned, if you're going to assume this responsibility, then training needs to go with it. That's how I see it, and maybe it should say sixteen hours of shooting and eight hours of scenario combined. So that if you find a training facility somewhere that wants to give you twelve hours of shooting training. And another twelve hours of scenario-based, maybe that's okay, but.
But I think that would be, that would be violating state statute then.
Would it?
Because it's, uh, states, it's the state statute that you have to have sixteen hours of live fire.
Okay, so that's the case, then we can't change that plan.
We can't re- reduce it, we could increase it.
Yeah. We could increase it, but.
But I, that was the point, uh, and then Ryan, with reference to the approved list.
Yeah.
You're, you were talking about the approved list of those qualified to do the training.
Yeah, so.
So, sorry, I misunderstood that, thank you.
Yeah.
Right, can, can you, where's that at, is it?
I'm certainly looking for that, and I don't, should.
So in the draft policy.
It's in the statute, yeah.
What I'm referring to is, um, under the instructor trainer qualifications, under the experience. It has, you know, it kind of lists out, uh, the requirements, but then it also says, um, that it has to be approved. Where was that?
It's, it's on that instru- experience part, like the instructor. Speaking as the instructor, not, not who's getting the training. Shall have at least ten years of experience in law enforcement, military or other positions responsible for public safety and protection. I think, I think the approved list reference, if I remember right, and I'm not gonna say that I didn't, I think that was in the statute itself.
Yeah.
Is that right, Ryan?
I did not, I, if, again, I don't claim to be a lawyer, Mr. Weaver, I just. How I understood or interpreted the state statute was that we were to work with lo- local law enforcement. Not basically have them approve the list. But how it's written in this, it basically says that to meet the qualif- uh, meet the qualification described below, subject to approval by local and law enforcement. So how I read our policy is that our local law enforcement has to approve them in order to train us.
Yeah, in order to train us, I.
So who, it's, so back to my initial question, who is going to maintain that list, who's responsible for maintaining that list?
What list are you talking about, Ryan?
The list of who, who we can go to to get our training.
Yeah.
I, I would guess law enforcement's always gonna have that.
Okay, and are they okay with that, because the last meeting we had, it sounded like they didn't want anything to do with this.
No, we talked to them afterwards, I, I don't think they don't want anything to do with it, Ryan, I don't think.
Okay.
I, I think they, my impression when we talked to them, they want to be involved so they know what's going on, because.
That makes sense.
They don't want to be surprised by anything, and they want to know that whoever's training, they feel comfortable with that training.
And maybe that's as simple as making a phone call.
Yeah.
Having Dave make a phone call to whatever place you're trying to go to and just have a chat with whoever's doing the instruction. But I see what you're saying, is if we go back to liability here, if we say that we're gonna have a list that's approved, then we're assuming responsibility for who you're train- getting training with and all of that. So what Pandora's box is that open at that point?
And that's why I think it says subject to approval of the local law enforcement, it's not the district that's approving anything, it would, but that's. Where, and it doesn't specifically say list, but I see what you're saying, it says meet the qualif- qualification described below, subject to approval by local law enforcement, so the local law enforcement would.
And maybe that's, uh, you know, maybe that's a, a Brad Ott. Makes a phone call and says, yeah, Ryan, you can go to that training in Casper because those guys know what they're doing. After talking to them, or maybe he knows them, or maybe someone knows who you're going with, I don't know, but I see what you're saying with that, because now. Who's, who's policing that more or less?
Or when we have changes of leadership in our law enforcement, you know, is there gonna be a disconnect, or is there gonna be someone who doesn't want to do it?
I don't know, I don't know.
Maybe the idea initially was to not hook up with some, you know, like the Branch Davidians or something. At the beginning of your training from that, you know, maybe, maybe that was the stopgap measure in there that says, you know, it's gotta be a reputable and.
Experienced.
Experienced, professional company. Or institution.
And as far as the volunteers, how I read that, if you think you're gonna volunteer anytime, and you want to carry your concealed carry. You better be trained.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter if you say, listen, my child's no longer in school. But I'd like to volunteer for that class, but I don't think, carry my concealed weapon, you better be up to snuff. I mean, it's pretty clear to me, even for a single day class or anything, so you better make a decision if you're ever gonna do that. The other thing I think you can do is, I'm gonna volunteer, but I'm not gonna carry, I'm not gonna have my concealed carry. And, and that's always a choice. You can, you can have a concealed carry and go help, but just not take your, your gun with you. I mean, those are solutions that I'd see fairly easily, because if you do want to volunteer, take your gun out. Leave it at home, lock it in a box and go help. And I think this pretty much follows the, the model, isn't it, John?
Very, yeah, I think it's pretty well exactly what, what they sent us.
From W S P.
It's called Kalpeki, I think it was from the officers.
And like I said, I think this is a learning experience for all of us.
Yeah, I think my biggest concern on the volunteer portion is, I mean, again, my, my daughter just graduated. So let's say this was implemented last year, I went through as a volunteer, I'm not an employee. Now I want to attend games next year. It should be in my right, so at what point does that volunteer status get cut off, is it the end of the school year, or, or is it one of those, don't ask, don't tell?
Right. I think it's assumed when you're around students, right, you're volunteering around students, if you go to a game, you're a parent or you're a community member, but you're. In front of students, you're volunteering, you have to meet that requirement, yeah.
And that's gonna be a slippery slope, yeah.
So then.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah, so then basically the volunteer status would go away once you are no longer actively helping students or chaperoning or.
I think it'd be annual, right, you'd have the annual, so if I volunteered in the fall and I met that requirement in the summer, I could volunteer and have my concealed weapon. And then maybe in the spring, I want to come back, it still follows me because I have a year.
Right.
I have to meet that, so.
So then the next year, you just don't?
You'd have to do the recurring training, I would guess.
Yes, you were gonna continue to volunteer.
Yeah.
Cause my question on that, or I guess comment maybe is, if that's the volunteers, cause we had the conversation earlier about. When, when does a, an employee. An employee or a parent watching their kid play in a ballgame? Are they always an employee, and that was the consensus, is that if you're an employee of the district, you're always an employee of the district and subject to this, whether you are on duty or not. So that, that's a difference between the volunteer, but in, I think it's gonna be a slip, I think it's a learning curve that we're gonna run into.
My only, sorry, go ahead. My only concern is, and maybe there's something in there that says it, the way that that is worded. Any others hired or compensated by the school district, we've had students. Who have worked as custodians, and we have had students who worked the grounds in the summer.
I think students are, if you're a student, it doesn't.
If eighteen and under.
Eighteen or under.
Eighteen or under, yeah, you know what I'm saying.
And, and if you're a student, if you still are a student.
If you have the title of student, even if you're getting paid by the district, you do something.
Yeah.
Just a student, yes, so you'd have worked baseball, and you'd have a lot of that kind of stuff, like you said.
Okay.
Um, sure.
It's the question I ask, if you're eighteen, you can get a concealed carry, but you can't take it on school grounds.
The state statute says specifically students are, it doesn't make sure, but our rule.
Okay, just one second, wait, that was already, I just can't see the rest of it.
Yeah, so, so even if you were nineteen and you were still in school, you can't have a concealed carry.
Yeah.
Our rule just. Sorry, I don't think, I don't think our rule says that.
Statute says, says it very clearly, yeah.
Yeah, it says you're a student. Alright, so any other comments, discussion, changes, anything that you guys would like to see on this? This is what would be published in the paper for our, uh, public comment, period.
Okay. Sounds good.
Everybody good with it? Last call.
Are you publishing the entire thing, or are you just publishing that you're going, like, you need to go to X to C?
I think it's the whole thing.
I think you have to publish the whole.
And I think we have.
It's the whole thing, yeah, cause we've had that too already do that.
I agree about the costume.
I was like, dang, we should have card pulled. Not with it, but to our.
You should have, yeah.
They buy a nurse this week.
It, it's, I understand that problem.
I don't, they don't have no rules. So I don't think it's published, but plat two?
Plat two's there, there's already, yeah. We had it from Shana.
They're a rule like this, that they have a policy about?
Every school district in the state has to.
No, no, no.
No, 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 I don't think they do, they're not going that same direction.
There is a. Oh, no, they are going this direction, so they gave us the whole.
I would.
By your, by the laser or.
They do, they do.
They're getting hot to your butt.
There is a rumor, there are a lot of rumors around here, right?
There is a lot of rumors in Jersey, so be careful.
Yeah, no, I, I think they are, but they're wrong.
Trust me, that's our number one complaint, is like, oh, we heard, I'm like, well, that's not true.
Well, you realize his wife is a super intended.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, just saying.
It's not just with the district, it's with fire, you know, some, like, there's so many those things already.
Fair enough, well, we'll look in the.
I had an ordinance, I just did.
I will not.
I got it down to five lines.
You will, no.
Cause of. I'll check.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion on.
Anyone else?
Anything on this? We will adjourn the workshop and reconvene in thirteen minutes.
So.
Yeah, there's snacks, help yourself.
Water.
And there's, yeah, there's water in the fridge.
I'll always be here, who are you talking about?
Yeah, right, I know that. So I got the bug guy out to my properties for a comfort this week, so now we can move into the main house this week.
She did, I did, Isabel called and I canceled my position, and she canceled, and she was talking, and she had, she said she's. And the pain. I, Andy, you know, you probably don't know, but she grew up, she's a girl. Because there's that reaction, air and sweat, she goes, yeah, well, tell me.
Yeah, at least something happened on that.
But, um, she was in good, pretty good spirit, she said, you know, like.
I'm sure there will be leftovers.
Sounds like you're gonna, can you get, it's gonna happen. Maybe she buys T-shirts.